It's August 1st, it's 7:01 and this is the Bennington School District Board of Directors meeting for the month. So we'll start with public comments, please. So please step on up and introduce yourself, please.
Hi, I'm Jane Connor.
I can't hear you. You can't hear me?
Can't hear me?
If you're going to speak up, please.
Oh, Jane Connor, member of the community. Um, three things, one super great. I just noticed, and I didn't print the second page of the agenda, is there not an other business agenda item on all your agendas?
There's not. In fact, we stopped doing the other agenda item several meetings ago because it lacked transparency.
Okay, so if a board member has something to add to the conversation about something that's not on the agenda, how would they go about doing that?
So the agenda can be amended either first thing before any agenda item is begun, or in advance of the meeting beginning, reach out to the chair and the chair will add it to the agenda.
Okay, so if they think of something tonight, it has to wait until the next meeting?
Yep.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to ask is, are you all aware of the open meeting law training session that took place at an MAU meeting in June? Is it June?
Yes.
Is the board aware of that?
So I don't know if I was aware of it or not. It doesn't ring a bell now, but I don't know.
Okay, well, it was really, I said it tonight, or said it that night and I'll say it tonight, I think it was really unfortunate that you didn't know about it because I think many of you hopefully would have chosen to attend. The open meeting law session was specifically part of a lawsuit for MAU, but considering the lawyers came all the way down, it would have been great if many, many more board members had been able to be there. However, it was taped and I want you to know, I don't know if it's on Cat TV or where it is, but it was taped and I would encourage you to spend the time, although it's not exciting, I think it would be really valuable for you all to watch it. And the other thing I just wanted to say was, if my understanding is correct, under Act 46, the elementary schools will be consolidating throughout the district. Is that true?
I don't know that a final decision or a final directive has been handed down.
Okay, let's just say, if that's the case and if the elementary schools are going to be consolidated, I really hope board members and administrators are starting to think really creatively on how to use the elementary schools in new and different ways to, I mean, it could transform the elementary school education that's offered in the district and it could solve many problems. The one that comes to my mind immediately is the inequality in our schools. So I would just like to plant that seed. If there's an opportunity, I would to you, our leaders, to be thinking about those things and hopefully, looking for some community and, but not asking that I be one of those people, but it would be great if you're thinking along those lines, only in the hopes that it does happen. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comments? Okay, moving on to agenda item two, the consent agenda, which was published. Could I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as published, please?
Someone.
Thank you, Jackie Prue. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mary. Any discussion on accepting the consent agenda as published? Hearing none. All those in favor, please, all those in favor of accepting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And it carries. Very good. Number three, treasures reports, which was included, and I don't see Renee here.
She is not here this week, so I do have the warrant for going to sign.
Okay. Do you have any questions about the treasures report that was distributed? Anyone have anything they'd like to ask Jim about? Okay, so moving on to educational matters, and I see Principal Colley representing our three schools.
We're in summer vacation mode, so not everyone's available.
Thank you, thank you for joining us.
So I'm here with Edie, Principal Dunn, and myself. We just wanted to share some thoughts and some progress and some notes for the upcoming year. So our final celebrations did happen in June. Our faculty continued their professional learning and actually, in just over a little period of weeks, we're back in school, which is exciting. During the professional learning days, grade levels reviewed student data, prepared instructional groupings for the school year. They worked out the common assessments. Our leadership teams met to revise procedures and protocols of our multi-tiered systems of supports. Our student risk screening scales, our school-wide information data system, and looked at that so that they could create groupings of our students for the upcoming fall instructional process. Special area teachers, nurses, counselors, and professionals met at the SU level according to their discipline. And they also engaged in focus areas of professional learning. Professionals had a unique opportunity to create their last day of professional learning and personalized it to their professional development needs, and that also aligned for their continuous improvement plans. As you might be aware, administrators consider those final days as a get ready and go for the new school year. So our planning is right in gear. We have been meeting together as administrators and we are collaborating, reviewing, and aligning our vital programming and training. We have scheduled trainings for our new Lexian iXL map tier instruction, computer piece programs ready. We're finalizing our master schedules to align with the agency of education guidelines, as well as our support, as well as our support collaboration for our professionals, instructional programming in all areas and in all levels. We also aligned our after-school programming calendar session dates just recently with the help of many colleagues. As we're time drawing nears to the opening of the school day, we'll be placing the final touches on our professional learning day agendas, welcoming incoming kindergarteners, students during our kinder camp sessions, and preparing for the first day of school celebrations. And we hope to see you on the first day of school. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. So moving on to agenda item five, we have two policies to review. The first is to warn, proposed policy 7192, which governs the correspondence to the board. So my hope is, there is a policy on the books, this one has been. It discusses some of the criteria for what needs to be in a piece of correspondence to the board. It's directed to the board chairs, but it needs to include full name, physical address, and telephone number. And then it provides provisions for communicating with superintendent, communicating with the board. So can I please have a motion to warn? Thank you, Jackie Kelly. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mary. Any discussion about warning 7192?
Other than the black highlighted bold words there, were there any changes? Or is that even a change? Or is it just highlighting for emphasis?
I believe that's a change, but I-
Because typically, and the statement holds for 7300 as well, and my printer at home isn't working, so I couldn't have it happen with me, but there weren't any changes at all that I could find in 7300, so I was just wondering why we were voting on it again. If it's already on the books, I didn't see any strikes, I didn't see anything on there unless I missed something. I looked at it and the only change I saw on 7192 was the bold. So is that the case?
Well, let's get through 7192 first, then we'll get to 73. So we have a first and a second. Any further discussion on warning 7192?
Is that a change? That's the question.
I'd like to make a comment. I'd like to make a comment. Dan, don't you sit on that committee?
No, I do not.
So I am the BSD rep to that committee, but I was not present for the meeting where that was discussed. But let me-
It just seems to me that would have been on the books in the first place. And maybe while Chris is looking that up, someone else might be able to answer my question, which is, I'm looking for-
Do you have the policies there?
Policy or information about correspondence within our board, most members?
I'm sorry, just start it over, please. I'm trying to do both at once.
So reading through this, it kind of, it made me think of something else, which is, I'm looking to know from the group where there's information or policy, or maybe it doesn't exist, about correspondence within our board. Is that a policy already? I couldn't find that, but it's sure.
Sure. So it's my understanding that it's, that's not governed by policy, that's governed by open meeting law. And so we can have communications, there can be three of us who talk about a thing, but as soon as quorum starts talking about a thing, then it's not good anymore.
I've studied that quite a bit, I just didn't know, the exception comes when we make our own policies. It's how I read the, isn't how I read it to me. But I just want to know, is there anything else I should know to look for besides the open meeting information?
No, I believe that's it. Also, we can have full communication, whether it's the phone or email, if it's just strictly about scheduling. Scheduling matters, scheduling our meetings, for instance. So yeah, I don't know if that answers your question, Julie, or not.
Thank you.
It's the policy. Thank you. So the current 7192 does not include the requirement of the full name.
Right, that is a change.
Yeah.
All right.
So that's where that comes from. And it does not, the current policy does not ask for full name or phone number, the way that the draft 7192 does.
Okay. Typically, I'm used to looking at it, seeing a strike through and then an addition or whatever, and just when they change it to bold. Yeah, they changed it to bold, and I was thinking, is that actually a change or is it just emphasis?
So any further discussion about warning 7192? Hearing none. All those in favor of warning 7192, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, rather? Hearing none, so it is so warned by the BSD. So the second policy, 7300, and I'm looking for what the change was. So the 7300, as it stands right now, talks about if there is, if the only agenda item is executive session, then there is no need to accept public comments. And I believe that that's the change that was made here, I'm just trying, just looking for the language.
Chris, I don't think there is a change, well, there was from the original, but we warned it and improved it, so now we're adopting it.
Oh, okay, so that's why there's no striking.
Right, okay, great. So it's already done. Okay, thank you for that clarification, Jackie. So with that bit of clarity, can I have a motion to adopt 7300, please?
Someone.
Thank you. Could I have a second? Thank you, Mary. Any discussion about adopting 7300? Great hearing none. All those in favor of adopting policy 7300, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. So that is adopted by the BSD. So now we turn to Jim for the superintendent's report, please.
So first thing under there is Principal Molly Stark. I'm going to defer that to after we come out of executive session. There are some things about the appointment and employment that we need to discuss in executive session, then I would ask that you come out, have a discussion in public session, and take action. Please, I want to give an update on where summer employment has been in recruitment in BSD. In Molly Stark, you had 16 openings between classroom teachers, power educators, administrators. 14 have been filled, and there are three vacant, including the principal sitting here tonight. Bennett Elementary, you had nine openings, six have been filled, three are still vacant. The interview process is going on for those positions right now. You had two openings in Mawnee, they have both been filled. In Schoolwide, all BSD, we have filled, we have filled one speech-language pathologist. We are still seeking a second speech-language pathologist for the Bennington School District. The posting ended on July 5th, there were no candidates, so now we are pursuing other avenues besides school spring to fill that position. The audiologist position, that person retired, who was at Molly Stark, so the posting is active and we are in the process of interviewing, we believe we have a candidate and negotiations are ongoing. That's an off-contract position, so it's not, the salary is negotiable as opposed to being a contracted position. So the total of 22 positions have been filled and there are eight presently vacant, but other than the speech-language pathologist and maybe the audiologist, I think that we will have them all filled by the start of the school year. Monday and Tuesday of next week, just to let you know, I will be leading the administrative retreat for all administrators in the district. It's something that we do every summer. And some of the topics that we're covering with principals, vice principals, directors, the HR department will be leading a presentation on social media and free speech, which is something that is impacting our performance and our work every day. The Quicken Development Process Department will be doing our continuous improvement plan and talking about where our focus areas are for this year. We also will be discussing trauma-informed practice, email safety issues, something that in light of what recently happened in panel is, in loss of funds, which were thankfully recovered, but we feel that it warrants a discussion with all administrators, so then they can take back to their buildings. And the following spot, we'll be going over some big changes coming from the state in budget control groups, chart of accounts, budget stat reports, some interesting things that way. So it's two days, Monday and Tuesday next week. And then Thursday and Friday of next week, many of our administrators will be going through incident command training with the state of Vermont, but we're doing it here. Vic Maloney has arranged that, so that's Thursday and Friday of next week. This time, I'm going to defer a few minutes to Jerry Prue. I asked your director of facilities to speak to you about what the summer progress, and it's been a very different summer with a switch in our contracted cleaning services, but he's going to give you an update on where we are on summer cleaning and the construction projects that are going on in the district.
I'll start with the cleaning. We have, all the staff are hired, they were hired, I shouldn't say that, they were hired earlier, but to go through the process of the criminal background checks, we do not let anybody in our schools unless they enter for background checks and can take anywhere from, you know, three to eight weeks, but we're all above everybody involved in the background checks and in our buildings. So we'll be doing the best we can with what we have and, you know, starting a little bit later than we would have liked to, but we've got to do it anyways. Molly Stark, we have roof projects underway, we started that. We'll be doing a, our window projects continue along with that here at Pannell. The week of the 13th, they'll begin to do the two rooms that we budgeted for this year in this building. We also finished up a sewer project over at Molly Stark that's given us some trouble over the years. And the lucky thing that, you know, you have 80 feet to dig in and we come across, and dig in the sewer line, we come across an electrical wire that was in conduit, conduit that totally rusted away. Last fall, when we dug the sewer line that we had to fix, 40 feet away, it was in excellent shape. So it was lucky enough that we found a sewer agent to drop in the wire, so they're finishing that part of that project. So, you know, when you get involved in stuff, you never know what the next phase is going to be. Unfortunately, we had to unhook some of the ACs, we considered how it's time to remove off the roof because of having to overtime and then move the mat, but it seems to me this is the year that we get the heat that the AC is getting. I don't know if there's anything else.
I have a question. I noticed a line item in the treasures report that we had flooding at Molly. What happened?
That was back a while ago, I think it was.
I would assume so.
That was the backup of the sewer that we ended up changing part of the ladder, whether it caught up or didn't finish around this year, so hopefully that won't happen again.
So Jerry, if you're not prepared to talk about this, that's fine, but how are the chimney rebuilds going?
Oh, that was tear downs, actually not rebuilt.
Now rebuilds are done, okay.
They're done, that was done with a member of my own staff-
Okay.
-who is a mason by trade and who did an excellent job. And the state has to, I guess, edit that.
And that was part of the roof project, taking that down?
That was part of the roof project, to get it down so we didn't have to-
Flash around it.
We wouldn't have to flash around them, they'd be just gone because they're not using them because with the propane, we use a different type of smoke stack, so we didn't have to use them.
Cool, okay.
Did an excellent job, like I said, first out there. Took a peek up the other day because of motion and everything, so that'll put a peek up the ladder, watched it put five to six inches insulation in one section, but it'll be different depending on the section, how much insulation it gets and the weight that the roof is suffering with. So I'm very happy. I just like, I know, I think, I haven't got exact numbers yet, but I think we fared pretty well this winter, and it's a long tough winter with our project of our savings for propane, what we estimated, the reboos, we come in with that number, so I'm very happy with it.
Thank you, Jerry. Another thing I want to talk to you about, as was mentioned in public comments, Act 46. So as you, just as a reminder, the state plan is due November 30th, and we need to be fully operational under what that plan may be by July 1 of 19. Now, the Secretary of Education issued a plan, and it was, as you say, that we're consolidated at the elementary level. That is going to be their recommendation to the board. So the state board set up a series of meetings, I mentioned some dates at our last meeting. The one for our school districts is September 19th. And these are regional meetings, so these meetings are set up so that they are easily accessible for everyone. So our meeting is in Chester, Vermont.
Yeah.
So it is September 19th at Green Mountain High School in Chester. And they haven't announced the time yet, but if it went like the July meeting, it's 8:30 in the morning, starts at 8:30.
What day is that?
It is a Tuesday.
Yeah, it's a Tuesday.
So what, my suggestion is that you put on your September agenda a discussion about, if you want to go to that meeting, that regional meeting, what do you want to say to the board? Who your representatives are going to be. So I'm going to read the minutes of the July meeting, they're not official minutes yet, but of the July meeting, you can go and do the same thing. It's on the state website, and it talks how the meetings are structured, each district that's listed that day, and on that day, there are, now, 10 districts listed for proposals that day. So not going to make a lot of time that we have. When I look at the minutes that happened, there were two districts that didn't even go, so they, one could assume, and the message from the superintendent, that there was no representative coming, that they were, they had no fault with the state plan. There were two districts that sent representatives and talked that they didn't have fault with the state plan. And then the rest of the districts there were ones that were against the state plan. Now, as we run to this committee, this board, sorry, this board was an, sent as your Act 9 proposal, which is what we had to send under Act 46.
Section 9.
Section 9. When the, when the vote didn't pass, we had to file section 9. We submitted as our section 9, basically the Articles of Agreement that the study committee had put together. So in other words, as a board, you did not disagree with what the state is proposing. What the state plan doesn't address, and what this board may want to address in discussing your summary meeting, is governance. So that, remember, the Articles of Agreement under Act 46, the proposal was for a hybrid model, which is the same model that Mount Anthony Union School District uses. So, and that, the secretary's report was silent on that. So that would be one area of concern for me. And our attorney is also available to consult with us, review this with them, if there's any questions that, so really, you don't have to go if the board is, oh, one final thing I want to say, there's always a minority opinion, and that was some boards asked about what, you know, that would be. Any member of the public can go. So the board is going to have, be given official time if you want to go. Any member of the public can go, but you'll be limited to two minutes. So if you disagree with what action this board takes, if any, and you want to speak for yourself, or anybody wants to go, they should know that, you know, that we go into Chester to speak two minutes or less. My suggestion is, as I said, put this on the agenda, have a discussion whether you want to stay the course with the plan as submitted, and you, or do you want to send a representative there to speak to some other points to it, but that representative should go there representing the board. August 1st, safety grant, remember the safety grants that we had Vic Maloney writing for meeting with all the principals? The state has put money available for this. We were anticipating release of who was awarded those grants today, August 1. I checked the website one more time before I left today. I did not see where they've released where that is yet, so. So I'll conclude by saying, we do have a recommendation for the principalship of Molly Stark, but there's some things we need to talk about negotiation-wise, and then we can come out.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Any questions for Jim? Okay, great. So under the chair's report, the only thing that I wanted us to begin thinking about is how we, as a district, can best utilize our public outreach person. So Derek Carson- First day was today. His first day was today? Yeah. Has been hard around Derek Carson, of course, covered the banner education beat for a long time. Seems like a good hire, I'm happy to hear that Derek is on board, but how can we utilize that? Some ideas that came to my mind, and I don't really necessarily like to take action tonight, but rather just start thinking about this and maybe we readdress this in September. But we know the ton of work that's gone into increasing safety in our elementary schools. We know the ton of work that's gone into making things like CI3T, our PBIS programs. We know those because we talk about those, we talk about them a long time in meetings like this. But how can we use Derek to kind of spread that, spread the word on those things? And an idea that was recommended to me by a community member was creating short little videos to go up on Cat TV, to go up on our own website, you know, little two or three-minute snapshots of what all of those efforts look like.
Mini presentations.
Mini presentations, right. You know, so Vic, for instance, came and chatted with us for, you know, 45 minutes or so.
Put it up.
Let's put that, we could put that in there, but let's condense that into easily digestible bits, that if people who just want to get the surface level can just go to that two or three-minute video. And I see Mike Keller kind of waving his hand because he knows folks at Cat TV. I think Derek might know somebody at Cat TV, too.
Yeah, we did that with Donna Lee.
Yeah, great.
Which is in the SBSU.
Yeah. So those kinds of things, I think we can really use Derek to drive for. But any other ideas that people have? I would love to hear, and we can hear him now or we can hear him later? So Jeff Prue?
We spent, oh, I know Jackie, Kelly and I spent time at the SBA workshops in October, and part of it was public engagement. And the school districts that do, and supervisory meetings that are the most successful are actually the boards out with community, they're having front court forums with all different groups, whether you have to sit at Willowbrook, Applegate, at the Beach Street Firehouse, not Beach Street Firehouse, down here at the Firehouse and invite the neighbors in that live there, find a place on Upper Main Street, and get as many parents to listen. And that's how you, that's how you get parental involvement and understanding of what's going on in the school systems and what kids need to learn. And there's been a couple districts up north that have been very, very successful at this. And actually, there was a grant we were supposed to write earlier this year to get funding on, so the teach boards or communities on how to do this, but I don't think we got it either, Jim.
I believe we wrote it, but we did not get awarded the grant, yes.
Yep. And so what I envision us doing is at some point, taking official, taking an official vote to direct the superintendent to effectuate some of these ideas. So we can, we can continue to sit on these, we can bring it up for the discussion in September, and maybe at that point, we have a list of things that we want to officially ask Jim to have the public outreach person do. And I don't know, you know, in terms of how much time, how Derek spends his time between all of the schools in the SBSU, because he is an SBSU employee, I guess we'll let Jim figure that piece of it out.
So I did meet with Derek on his intake, and we set some immediate goals. So public safety is one of the first things that's on his list, along with, he, what he wanted to accomplish is the small little video clips of, similar to what was started with Donna Lee. He's been introduced to all the principals at our retreat next week, so I invited him to come, he's got a time slot to talk about his process and the circuit that he will do with all the schools, because as you know, he is an SU employee, so it's not, we got to share him with everybody. And he's got, I think he's got some great ideas for increasing public awareness and public outreach. That's the skill that, you know, that we wanted from him, that's, that is his background and how we open communication and hearing. So I did not bring him here tonight, because I'm first going to introduce him to the SU meeting, because he's their employee, so I follow everything according to the form. We'll do SU meeting, and then he will be here at subsequent meeting, probably, possibly, I don't want to promise he'll be here for your September meeting, but he has pledged to be, whatever meeting the board requests to be there. And so just on his first day alone, I was already impressed with how he jumped right into it, so.
Good to hear.
Chris, let's also make sure we include teachers and children. Chris, let's also make sure we include teachers and building administrators on the outreach needs.
Sure.
What they see. We have, I'd like Jackie's idea about having those conversations.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
And just asking them, you know, is there any, is there anything that they need us to, you know, be a liaison, you know, topics, or-
Yeah, and I imagine, Jody, teachers to go to their principals, and the principals talking to us, either through their reports or through, through other ways, because absolutely, the teachers and staff in the buildings are going to know. We know what we kind of accomplish as a, as a board, but teachers and staff know what's going on in the buildings, and what we should be touting.
Couldn't be what you said, Joe.
I would just ask that teachers and building administrators, that as a board, we would work with them to know appropriate topics for those forums or discussions, for panties. I can't clearly hear you guys, because you don't have the fans.
Chris, I just want to make another comment. I wasn't putting aside what you had said, or what Jim had said, because that was all part of what we had learned about, too, but our, the taxpayers voted us in, they want to hear from us, they want to, they want to talk to us, and the only way we're going to be able to do that is if we get out there, they're not coming to the meetings, I mean, we don't have dialogue room.
So that's all I have for the chair's report. So our FRI items, there's the enrollment for June, noted in June, that was attached, the budget status report, our application for the Bennington Garden Club funding, and then we also were given a donation of $500. So could I have a motion to accept that $500 donation from the Bennington Garden Club, please? Thank you, Merity, could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jody. Any discussion about accepting that $500? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the donation, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We accepted that.
Are we going to talk about funding the garden club? Or did we? Because I don't remember.
Tell me what you need, please, Jackie.
Well, I read that letter, and it looked like they were asking for-
I thought that was what they had, that was-
Seize funding.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
So, the next one under E, Jerry spoke about the Janitronics contract, that's been signed, and those nominations were approved, because we did not have a meeting in July, that's been addressed already. So, any questions about agenda, items number eight? That's, we can decide that on our own. Yeah. Okay, so nothing else for the FRI, so could I please have a motion to move into executive session as per one, I got it, let me read it first, then you can-
As part of that motion, I want you to invite in the Director of Human Resources to call.
Okay. So to have executive session as per one VSA subsection 313A3, which is to discuss the appointment or employment or evaluation of a public officer or employee, provided that the public body shall make a final decision to hire or appoint a public officer or employee in an open meeting, and shall explain the reason for its final decision during the open meeting. And as part of that executive session, we would have Nick Galt from HR, the head of HR there. So could I have such a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Jackie Prue, could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Merity. Any discussion about having executive session? Hearing none, all those in favor of moving into executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good, we're in executive session, and I do anticipate us coming back for action after executive session. All right, so could I please have a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Thank you, Merity, could I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion about coming out of executive session?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor of coming out of executive session, please say aye. Any opposed?
You sound like you're not in here.
Okay, very good, so we are out of executive session. Superintendent Colkeen, would you please give us a rundown as to recruitment efforts for the Molly Stark principal, please?
When Dr. Muggins announced that he was leaving, it was late in April, which is, puts us deep in a hole trying to find an appropriate candidate. We advertised, the pool was small, screening committee went together, interviewed three We felt we had an outstanding candidate, and when we made the offer, they initially accepted, and three days later, they informed us they accepted another position. So, we went back and looked deeper into the pool that we had, and the screening committee could not come to a conclusion on any of the candidate that would be supported by the majority. So, we advertised for an interim candidate, we received a few applications, and a few from Vermont, most were from out of state with no experience working in Vermont, and we did have interest from a candidate in Vermont that would have appropriate experience, but there's an issue with licensing from AOE that would enable us to hire that person. So, then we received an email from one of our current principals and one of our directors expressing an meeting to, an interest to meet with me and our Director of Human Resources with a proposal for serving as co-principals, interim co-principals, they have no desire to leave their current jobs, and that would be Donna Colley and Kate Abbott. Donna is the principal of Monument Elementary, and Kate Abbott is the Director of Early Childhood Education. So the recommendation that I would make to the board is that you consider hiring Donna Colley and Kate Abbott as interim co-principals for Molly Stark Elementary for a one-year period.
Jim, for the purpose of the motion, is there a difference between appointing them and hiring them? Perhaps we could turn to Mr. Galt and-
Yeah, that's who I'm looking at, I-
So, so the recommendation from the superintendent is to bring on, okay, my question was, is for the purposes of the motion, is there a difference between hiring and appointing? And so we're going to ask Nick Galt if there's, if there is a difference enough that we should be careful of how we word the motion.
I would say you would appoint him.
Very good. So could I please have a motion to appoint Donna Colley and Kate Abbott as interim co-principals of Molly Stark Elementary School for the period of one year?
So moved.
Thank you, Jackie Prue, could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Merity. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor of appointing Donna Colley and Kate Abbott as interim co-principals of Molly Stark Elementary School for the period of one year, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none on the board, the motion passes. So, thank you. That was the last bit of business, that was the anticipated action out of our executive session, so could I please have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Kelly, could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Merity. All those, any discussion about adjourning our meeting? Hearing none, all those in favor of adjourning our meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good, meeting is adjourned, thanks.